Good afternoon, community. Good afternoon, school system and good afternoon, board members. I call this regular board meeting to order on this Thursday, May 18, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. At this time, we will go into the meeting opening with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by School Board Member Shashone Stewart and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jeremiah Harrison of Astroma High School accompanied by Senior Army Instructor Lieutenant Colonel Retired Stephen W. Johnston.
Bow your heads, please. Dear God, we thank you for allowing us to be here to join together, to come together as one with the same goal, the same mission and the same mindset. We're here for a purpose. Please allow our minds, our hearts to join together to come to one and to be apart as one. All these blessings I ask in your name. Amen.
Mr. President, Superintendent Narcisse, board members, fellow East Baton Rouge citizens, it's my honor and privilege to introduce this motivated young American, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jeremiah Harrison, who's a third-year cadet representing Astroma Magnet High School's JROTC program at the most recent parish-wide honor board for third-year Army Cadets. He's also the incoming battalion commander for Astroma's Tomahawk Battalion. He's a model cadet who's taken on the challenge of living out the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, Cadet Creed. Following graduation at the end of the next school year, Cadet Harrison plans to attend LSU to pursue a degree in engineering. Cadet Harrison is the son of Ms. Rona Tucker. Ladies and gentlemen, here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, I present to you with great pride Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jeremiah Harrison.
May you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jeremiah Harrison. We appreciate all the great work that you have done across our school system. At this time, Madam Secretary, we're going to, I'm sorry, recognition, apologies.
We just want to congratulate you and give you this medal showing our appreciation from the school board and to congratulate you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, School Board Member, Ms. Stewart. At this time now, we'll turn to Madam Secretary for a call to order and roll call.
District two, President Lannis.
Present.
District three, Vice President Powell. District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Present.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Here.
District eight, Ms. Kennison.
Present.
District nine, Mr. Martin.
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Before we go into our business, I will ask that we pull item H1 from the agenda. Revised Board Meeting Calendar. We good to go, Council? Thank you. At this time now, we are going to item C1 under Information Only, Monthly Financial Report, if there is a report. Is there one, Ms. Lopez? Thank you. Seeing that there is no report, we will now go to item C2 under Personnel Changes. Are there any personnel changes? Seeing none at this time, we will go to item C3, Public Records Request Monthly Report. Are there any?
Skip the minutes, Mr. Lannis.
I'm going pretty fast tonight, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, let's back up one step. Let's go to item B1, Meeting Minutes, Approval of the School Board Minutes of the April 20 of 2023 Regular Board Meeting and the May 4, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting as published in the Official Journal.
Mr. Lannis, I need to make one correction to that.
Yes, ma'am.
The May 4 minutes were not uploaded, so we need to approve just the April 20 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Okay, so I will recite. At this time now, we will turn to item B1, Meeting Minutes, Approval of the School Board Minutes of the April 20 of 2023 Regular Meeting as published in the Official Journal. Can I get a motion? Moved by School Board Member Nathan Russ, seconded by School Board Member Shashone Stewart. This time now, we'll go to our board for any comments.
Mr. President, I have a comment, but we're going to need to make a voice vote, having some technical difficulties.
Yes, sir. No problem. Thank you for letting me know. All right, seeing no public comment, I'm sorry, seeing no board comments, we'll go to the public. Seeing no cue cards in this matter, we'll go back to our board. Seeing no names inside of the queue, Madam Secretary, please call for a roll call vote.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District two, President Lannis.
Yay.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Yay.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yay.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Yay.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Yay.
District eight, Ms. Kennison.
Yay.
District nine, Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time now, we'll go to item C, Information Only. Seeing as there were no updates for the monthly financial report and item two, no personnel changes, I'll ask, are there any public records request monthly reports? Seeing none, we'll move right along to item D1 as Information Only, Update from the Superintendent.
Thank you, President Lannis. Super excited that today we kicked off our graduation. We had a graduation at Glen Oaks High School, President Lannis, and Board Member Gode was there today. It was great to begin to see all of our students graduating in our schools. As you may know, all graduations will be held at either LSU or at Southern University this year. The complete listing of the graduation locations and dates and times can be found on our website at www.ebrschools.org. Second thing is, we are officially, last night, as you can imagine, we're in graduation. We're celebrating our students. It's been great, our students have been doing really well across the system from all our schools. We had a Val and Sal dinner, which was wonderful, to recognize the great work for all the kids that were there. That banquet was at Boudreaux's. Students and their families were treated with a full course meal. They had also guest speaker and awards, and so we're just excited about that. There'll be plenty, plenty of celebrations throughout the next two weeks, and we always tell the community, we welcome them to kind of join us. And also, I know that we moved to bigger locations for graduations, and so I've been getting a lot of emails about extra tickets, and so we try to work through those extra tickets through the principals, and so if anyone has any questions, don't hesitate to call, but we're really excited about the great work that's happening. Last thing I just wanted to share is, to the board, we'll eventually start sharing also some of our final numbers in terms of kids that have completed dual enrollment classes, advanced placement courses, and also industry-based certification. We also have coming up soon, which will be what we call our Match Day, where we are matching up companies with students for internships for $15 an hour across our system, so we're real super thankful, and we'll have businesses there as well. So we'll be sharing some of those dates, and we thank that partnership between us, the chamber, and many of the business communities that are here helping to move the work. And then last but not least, I want to just thank our teachers, our principals, APs, deans, school librarians, everybody in our school system, bus drivers and cafeteria workers for another great year. As you know, when kids are doing well, it's just not only what happens in the classroom, but it's the entire system itself, so we're super excited about that, and so we'll continue to do that work. Thank you so much, President Lannis.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Narcisse. Before we go into our reports, I would just like to also thank everybody that had anything to do with yesterday's inaugural Who Got Game Basketball Tournament that took place across our entire district. I see Ms. Nicola Hall is shaking her head. It's because she lost. And I brought the trophy today, I'm going to spin the ball. That's right.
I believe, President Lannis, you were on, that was my team, is that correct?
That was your team.
Oh, thank you.
I took it over and I made sure they got to the championship and won.
I just wanted to check that.
Okay, everybody.
President Lannis, you out of order.
Point of personal privilege. All right, everybody, getting back to our board, you know, all things are not always business, some things have to be fun, but again, thank you all for participating. It was thoroughly fun, and to see so many people come out and participate, it shows that we have a lot of synergy happening across our district. At this time now, we'll go back into our regular agenda with item E, Reports and Board Appointees, two committees and agencies. Are there any board appointee updates? Okay, at this time, seeing none, we will move right along to Unfinished Business, which will be, is our consent agenda, which will be read into order by School Board Member Patrick Martin. I'm sorry, this is unfinished business, that'll be the consent agenda. So for unfinished business, we will turn to item F1 Oversight, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Tax Plan Proposition One Budget Supplemental Recommendation, which was approved by the Tax Plan Oversight Committee on May 1, 2023. Can I get a motion? Moved by School Board Member Shashone Stewart, seconded by School Board Member Patrick Martin. At this time now, we will turn to our board to see if we have any board comment on the item. Seeing none, we will go to our public. Seeing no cards inside of the queue, I will come back to our board for any comments. Seeing none at this time, Madam Secretary, please call for the vote. Yes, ma'am.
Please vote.
Yes, Madam Secretary, please call for roll call, vote.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District two, President Lannis.
Yay.
District three, Vice President Powell.
Yes.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Yay.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yay.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Yay.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Yes.
District eight, Ms. Kennison.
Yay.
District nine, Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, moving right along. Next, we have item F2, Bid, BR Flame, Consideration of a Request to Accept a Low Bid for, I'm sorry, from Sienna Construction for the Baton Rouge Flame for Classroom Additional Project. Strategic Alignment, Student Achievement, Funding Source, General Fund. Can I get a motion? Moved by School Board Member Mark Ballou, seconded by School Board Member, sorry, Michael Gode. This time now, I will turn to our board to see if there are any comments. Seeing no names inside of the queue, we will turn to the public. Seeing no cue cards at this time, we will come back to our board. Okay, School Board Member Katie Kennison.
Got to get in there fast.
Right.
Can we give it like a three seconds?
Give it a slight second, okay.
A little bit more time, a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we do the meetings that we talked about with the stakeholders?
Now, I can attest to, at the Val and Sal banquet, they had it that night, there was a meeting held that night because somebody came from the meeting to the reception, so I can attest to that. There was a meeting held that night, I do know.
Can we get an update, Superintendent? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, the meetings were held. We actually have the principals here. President McBride, would you mind coming up? Love for you to share with the board.
A little shorter. Yes, we did have that meeting, and I think it was the same night as that event, and it was very well attended. We had a lot of questions, and Mr. Lewis, a lot of people were there, and so I think we cleared up any little misunderstandings about the purpose of the grant and how it's coming along. They've already started. We had a wonderful parent work day where they came and sort of cleaned out all of that upstairs that's been collecting stuff over the years. We had to throw it over the stairway dumpster on the bottom, and the construction companies have been coming in, the architects starting to clear the way for those four upstairs classrooms, and we started to move the other classrooms to get the pre-K materials in the rooms that they're going to be in, so.
Is, you're the principal?
Yes, sorry, Tricia McBride.
Sorry, nice to meet you.
It's okay.
Is it your opinion and the consensus of the people attending the meeting that it's a good idea?
Yes.
You guys want to do it?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the immersion program is growing, we're going to have three pre-K immersion classrooms to start our program from a little lower bottom up, and two three-year-old classes as well.
Right. Has there been any discussion of the matriculation from pre-K into kindergarten there?
Right, they're going to just move up, if you're in in the beginning, then you will keep moving up into the program.
You will. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that?
Anybody else?
Okay, no, I'm sorry, I put myself in the queue by mistake, but I'd just say briefly, thank you for this update. I think the last board meeting, a lot of what was being said or was communicated on behalf of our board was that, you know, just circling around and making sure that we cross every eye.
I understand that.
Yes.
Because a little miscue on my part did not have that second meeting because we just started with the pre-K, so.
It's okay, you know, things like that happen, but the fact that we were able to clear it up, we had great participation, keep up the great work that's happening at Flame, we do appreciate you.
You're trying. You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next in the queue, we have School Board Member Lewis.
Ms. McBride, you will be missed, I just want you to know that. You're welcome. Fingerprints.
It wouldn't Jermaine, Coach, but I let it slide. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, Coach, I'm kidding, Coach. Next in the queue, we have School Board Member Michael Gode.
Yeah, I'll pretend my name is Jermaine. I just also wanted to thank Ms. McBride for her many, many years of service. She will be entering retirement this year, at the end of this year, and I hope you do much better at retirement than I have, and enjoy yourself in doing that for you. I think it's been, how many years you've been, 42?
Twenty-nine, thirty in the system, but then this is my third career, so I've been working 57 years.
Fifty-seven, and you started when you were three, obviously. Yes, I get it, so thank you very much for all of your things that you've done for our parish and for the students. Thank you.
And in saying that, School Board Member Gode, can we please give her a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen? Fifty-seven years dedicated to students, community and schools, that is absolutely phenomenal, and we appreciate you so much, Ms. McBride. Next in the queue, we have our Superintendent Dr. Seaton Narcisse.
Yeah, I just wanted to add for the public that we worked on creating a new process in terms of choosing school principals, and today we interviewed, I got to talk to the recommendation from the advisory board for J.K. Haynes, and I know that Flame is going to come. What we're doing a little bit differently is that we are now involving multiple stakeholders with families, staff from that school, and also community partners to be able to go through an interview slate of the candidates, and then they provide me with the top two recommendations after they go through that slate, and then I choose from there based on that, the committee's choice of who they want to be school principal. And so I wanted to make that very clear, so Ms. McBride, I know they've been asking, what's the process? So, but we've been doing that for almost every school now, and the HR office is also sending out to make sure that the public is aware about how our process is much more inclusive with various stakeholders, and also for the committee to have a buy-in and a say on who is the next leader of the school. So, and Ms. McBride, I want to say publicly, thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Seeing no other names in the queue at this time, we will turn to our public for any comments. Seeing no cue cards at this time, we will come back to our board for public comment. Seeing no names in the queue at this time, Madam Secretary, please call for the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving right along to item G, Consent Agenda. At this time, it will be read into order by School Board Member Patrick Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following items are to be approved as part of the consent agenda and are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a board member shall request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. Item two, Attendance Zones High Schools, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of a Change in the Attendance Zone for Incoming Ninth Graders for a School Year 23-24 and thereafter for Broadmoor High School, Astroma High School, and Tower High School as a result of the required Attendance Zone for Incoming Ninth Grade Students at Capital High School. Number three, McKinley Elementary, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Following: A, Closure of University Terrace Elementary; B, Closure of Buchanan Elementary; C, Opening of McKinley Elementary with a new Attendance Zone encompassing the combined area of the former Attendance Zones for Buchanan Elementary and McKinley Elementary School. Four, Revised Budget, Consideration of a Request for Approval of the Revised 2022-2023 General Fund Budget for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Number five, Postlewa and Nettaville Proposal Auditing Services, Consideration of a Request for Approval to Accept the Proposal from Postlewa and Nettaville to Provide Auditing Services for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System for Three Years with an additional Two-Year Renewal Option at the Cost of $163,000 for 2023, $167,000 for 2024, and $171,000 for 2025, Funding Source General Fund. Six, Resolution Millage, Consideration of a Request to Adopt a Resolution for the Purpose of Levying Millage as Effective on the 2023 Assessment Role as Required by Law by June 1, 2023. Seven, Naming of the J.K. Haynes Site, Consideration of a Request to Accept the Committee Recommendation for the Naming of the New School to be Located J.K. Haynes Site. Number eight, Bid, Sea-Tech Culinary, Consideration of a Request for the Authorization for Staff to Advertise, Accept the Low Bid's Meaning Specifications, and Make the Award of a Contract for the Construction of Sea-Tech Culinary Kitchen, or Reject Any and All Bid for Just Cause in accordance with Louisiana Public Bid Law, Louisiana Statute Title 38, Chapter 10, Strategic Alignment Exemplary Customer Service Funding Source General Fund. Nine, Contract, Otis Elevator, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of a Contract Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Otis Elevator in the Amount of $45,300 per year for Five Years for Maintenance and Repairs on District Elevators, Strategic Alignment Operational Excellence Funding Source General Fund. Ten, Professional Services Contracts, Exceptional Student Services, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of Professional Services Contracts Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Following: A, Dr. Kasudra L. Williams LP, BCBA-D and CSP, Sunday Behavioral Services in the Amount of $60,000 to Provide Applied Behavior Analysis Services. B, Adaptive Solutions and Sherry Howlingsworth in the Amount of $20,000 to Provide Assistive Technology Assistance Services. C, DEF Resource Center of Greater Baton Rouge LLC in the Amount of $80,000 to Provide Qualified Sign Language Interpreter Services to Students. D, Audio Optical Systems of Austin Inc. in the Amount of $51,684 to Provide a Comprehensive Text-to-Speech Integrated Literacy Solution. E, Allied Instructional Services LLC in the Amount of $25,000 to Provide Orientation and Mobility Services to Students. F, Turner LLC in the Amount of $847,000 to Provide Nursing Services to Students with Disabilities. G, Chase Healthcare in the Amount of $77,000 to Provide Nursing Services to Students with Disabilities. H, Pediatric Services of America LLC, DBA Aviana Healthcare, in the Amount of $539,000 to Provide Nursing Services to Students with Disabilities. I, Egan Healthcare Corporation, DBA Egan Ochsner, HCBS River Parishes, in the Amount of $166,000 to Provide Nursing Services to Students with Disabilities. Funding Source, IDEA Part B, Strategic Alignment, Student Achievement. Eleven, Professional Services Contract, Non-Public, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of Professional Services Contracts Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Following: A, Catapult Learning in the Amount of $30,000 for the 2023 Catholic Schools Teacher Summer Institute. B, Inspire ED Consulting LLC in the Amount of $64,000 for the 2023 Diocese of Baton Rouge Summer Leadership Summit, Funding Source Title II, Non-Public. Twelve, Professional Services Contract, ANET, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Professional Services Contract Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Following: A, ANET in the Amount of $93,478.40 to Provide Benchmark Assessments for Grades Nine Through Eleven, Funding Source General Fund. B, ANET in the Amount of $192,678.40 to Provide Benchmark Assessment for Grades Three Through Eight, Funding Source Federal Funds. Thirteen, 2023-2024 Board Meeting Calendar, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Meeting Schedule for the 2023-2024 School Year. Fourteen, Litigation, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board in the Following Matter: A, Raisha Washington versus Cynthia Anderson and East Baton Rouge School Board, Document Number 703574, Section 22, 19 Judicial District Court, Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana, and Related Matters. B, Trish Trang Hin versus East Baton Rouge Parish School Board at AL, Suit Number 639052, Section 27, 19th Judicial District Court, Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana, and Related Matters. There's a possibility that there will be an executive session in the provisions of LRS 421782 to discuss the following, the preceding two items. I so move.
Thank you, School Board Member Martin, can I get a second? All right, seconded by School Board Member Nathan Russ. At this time, if there are any school board members that would like to pull an item, I would ask that you please put your name inside of the queue. All right, first up, we have School Board Member, I'm sorry, Vice President Carla Powell.
Yes, if we could, please pull item three, McKinley Elementary.
That's item three, McKinley Elementary. All right, thank you. Next in the queue, we have School Board Member Cliff Lewis.
Could we please pull items eight, please, and item 11?
That is item eight.
And 11.
And item 11. Okay. Seeing no other names inside of the queue, at this time to pull any items or for any other comments, we will now go to the public. Seeing no cue cards at this time, we will come back to our board. Okay, at this time now, we will call for a vote, and this is only on the items that were not pulled from the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, please call for the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. At this time now, we will turn to Item G3, McKinley Elementary: Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Following: Closure of University Terrace Elementary, Closure of Buchanan Elementary, Opening of McKinley Elementary with a new Attendance Zone encompassing the combined area of the former Attendance Zones for Buchanan Elementary and McKinley Elementary. But I think at this time, we need to make a correction before we move forward. So at this time, we'll allow Madam Secretary to make a correction. It should read Buchanan Elementary and University Terrace Elementary. So I'll just reread Item G3C for the correction. Opening of McKinley Elementary with a new Attendance Zone encompassing the combined area of the former Attendance Zones for Buchanan Elementary and University Terrace Elementary. Can I get a motion? Moved by Vice President Carla Powell, seconded by School Board Member Patrick Martin. Okay, at this time now, I'll turn to our board for any comments on this item. Seeing none, I will turn to the public for any comments on this item. Seeing no names inside of the queue, we will come back to our board for any comments on the item. School Board Member Cliff Lewis.
That was a mistake. I didn't mean to.
Okay, no problem. At this time, if there are not any other comments on this item from our board, Madam Secretary, we will call for the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn to Item G8, Bid: C-Tech Culinary: Consideration of a Request for the Authorization for the Staff to Authorize/Accept the Low Bids Meeting Specifications and Make the Award of a Contract for the Construction of C-Tech Culinary Kitchen or Reject Any and All Bids for Just Cause in accordance with the Louisiana Public Bid Law, Louisiana Revised Statute Title 38, Chapter 10. Can I get a motion? Moved by School Board Member Shashoni Stewart, seconded by School Board Member Cliff Lewis. At this time now, I will go to the queue. School Board Member Cliff Lewis.
My concern with the item is, I mean, it's roughly $700,000 for a kitchen at a facility that's already being underutilized. Is there that much demand for a kitchen at C-Tech? I mean, C-Tech's in my district, and I think it's a great school, but I'm not sure if there's $700,000 worth of demand for a culinary kitchen. And also, I mean, how many students are currently enrolled at C-Tech?
So, good evening, Board Member Superintendent. Thank you for having us here tonight. First of all, with the culinary kitchen, there will be some general funds and some career development funds that will be used to fund the project. It's not fully from the general fund. Regarding the demand, culinary was offered for 2023-24. The plan was to open two classrooms with, I think it's 20 students, and they had to open three sections because the first two sections filled within a week. Prostart is offered at several schools, but the demand for students wanting culinary is so much more, which is why the C-Tech team was considering opening the kitchen.
So, demand so much more, is there a real number attached to that? 300 students, 200 students?
Oh, sorry. For next year, I think it's 402 students? 450 students for next year. Martha, will you come to the mic, please?
Yeah. Hey, Margie. Been seeing you in a while.
And Board Member, right before Margie talks, I do want to add, it was a concern in terms of numbers. We worked a lot with schools, and so there's been a progression of increase. I think that 400 will be the highest number they've had ever in that school.
These are students who've been vetted for acceptance.
Okay.
So, we may need a whole nother wing next time.
Well, that'll be fine, too. I mean, I was not aware of the increase of demand.
So, as I understand it, there's a third class that's been opened as well, and the last time we had our weekly check-in meeting, the number was at 18. So, that third class is almost full as well.
I remember you inviting me to come over and have a meal, so I'm still coming.
Thank you. Oh, and the Louisiana Restaurant Association Prostart Director has been to the campus, and she's approved it, and she's going to help us find restaurants in the area that participate with high schools.
I'm sorry. How much of these dollars, what's the amount of dollars coming out of the general fund?
So, currently, half a million of the Career Development Fund is set aside for the kitchen, and then the additional would come from the general fund to 225,000.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lewis, are you familiar with what career development funds are?
No, not really. It sounds good, though.
It's 6% of every career in tech student gets a CTE fund, but they've added CDF. If you're in a high-wage class, you get an extra 6%. So, we've made money offering career in tech courses in EBR.
Good, that's a change. We're making money instead of spending money.
We do, and C-Tech is all CDF.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Coach Lewis. School Board Member Lewis, at this time now, we have School Board Member Michael Goday.
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone at the C-Tech Culinary Program that we, as a board, will be willing participants in any taste testings that you need, where we'd like to have. We can also sit for a final exam as the taste testers. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, School Board Member Goday. At this time now, seeing no other names inside of the queue, we will now turn to our public. First up, we have Ms. Coronda Corley.
Y'all look so lovely tonight. How y'all doing? Coronda Corley, parent disabilities advocate. I'm so happy to see y'all smiling because y'all know I'm about to tell y'all, this is a wrong move. Why? Because we have so... Okay. First and foremost, I love Tower High School's culinary program. Their program is very, very good. They teach the kids how to be very professional if they want to go into culinary. However, when we talked about this last time, I told y'all, we cannot continue to approve things to go to C-Tech, and you don't allow the children from Northeast and Woodlawn, which is the furthest away. How are they gonna get there so that they can actually receive the education? So, from Northeast to C-Tech building, it's gonna roughly take them about an hour. That's an hour of instructional minutes they missing. Now, let me not go on a tangent and start talking about that the building is not in ADA compliance, which would allow children with disabilities to be present and be able to participate. We have to make it to where everybody can participate, and that is problematic. So, I strongly encourage you to look at, if you choose to approve it, then that means you have to find a way for the students at Woodlawn and Northeast to actually be able to participate in the same programs. So, maybe there's a conversation for us to have about doing nice partnership with somebody. I don't know, BRCC and Jackson. But I am telling you that that's something that you would have to look at because our children at Northeast and Woodlawn, they are the furthest away from C-Tech, and they're not getting an opportunity to participate in these programs. In addition to that, students that attend Lehigh, they're not allowed to participate in this either, and it is only because the principal is making that decision because it was something along the line because they are college preparatory, that they're not afforded the opportunity to be able to participate in this and get a trade. And so, I do think that we need to actually look at what C-Tech is supposed to be about and make sure, again, that every single one of our kids in high school have an opportunity to be able to participate. And so, I'm gonna take all the rest of my time for the next item. I appreciate y'all smiling, and y'all look wonderful today, and make sure we have some food and drinks next time.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Always keeps a smile on our faces. At this time now, seeing no other cards inside of the comment queue from our public, we'll go back to our board, and I'll put myself in the queue really quick. I think we kind of spoke on this in Lent last time. One of the questions that I did raise, not to get from being germane on the topic, Madam VP, but one of the things we talked about last time was addressing that, and I asked the superintendent, what other programs are we looking at for Woodlawn and Northeast or schools that are kind of far out in proximity? And I think last time, I'll just allow you to speak on this. I know you said for Northeast, I'm sorry, not Northeast, but Woodlawn. You said that we're looking at ABC Contractors, possibly working with them to use a satellite setup at that campus, and you also said we're looking at other community partners to do satellite programs at Northeast also. So, I'll let you speak on that.
Yeah, as the board and the community knows, the schools were able to pick three of the five pathways, which is our traditional schools. And Woodlawn, one of their pathways was technology and construction manufacturing, and there's one more, Ms. Balding, do you remember the Woodlawn ones? So, the goal that we wanted to work was as they picked those areas, that they would be able to partner with business partners that were closer, so they wouldn't have to travel. So, ABC is actually closer there and working through a partnership with them, and that's a part of the work that we're doing through the Talent Action Collaborative. All the schools were able to pick three of the five pathways that was completed in December, and then from there, now we're gonna begin to match them up based on what those industries are, and that's from the northern part of the county all the way down to the southern part of the county.
Thank you. Next in the queue, we have School Board Member Vice President Carla Powell.
Dr. Norsees, I was gonna ask if Northeast or Woodlawn has not chosen a culinary arts program, do they at least have Family and Consumer Science or Home Economics? I know that that came up at the last meeting as well.
Yeah, so there will be, the school has still those options, it's just how they're creating within the pathways. And so, we are not limiting schools from that, but we are trying to connect business partners closer to schools so kids can do internships or do hands-on learning within those schools. And so, all of those opportunities are wide open.
So, families and parents and teachers and Ms. Corley, if you all want to see Family and Consumer Science at those particular schools, then you need to go and talk to the administration there to try to encourage them to add them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam VP. Next, we have School Board Member Shashoni Stewart.
I just had a question in regards to the C-Tech program and how students enter that program. Is it just at free will? Can anyone enter that program? How does that go?
We have an application process, and all schools are invited to encourage their students to attend. We send our teachers, our instructors out to promote their programs. We've had field trips all year from all area schools and middle schools to show off our programs in our facility.
And question like, so does, and I had a question, like, are some of the, like, a GPA, are any of those things like criteria?
Only for medical or if the program gets very full? Like, medical got full immediately with 150 students, and we don't have that many spots.
So, maybe my students may be transitioning from maybe like the disciplinary or maybe have had, you know, issues with behavior. They are allowed to apply for those programs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have students from Northeast and Woodlawn.
Okay.
And they're allowed to drive.
Okay.
If their parents allow them to drive.
I think that was a concern about the transportation as well, yeah.
And Board Members, I just want for the board to be clear, transportation, as we offer these type of programs, it is something that we have to resolve, but it's much more complex.
All right, thanks.
And I'll also mention that we had students with internships for the pilot that were from Northeast, and transportation transported them to their work sites every day.
And maybe those students that, like, maybe are behind in high school, you know, kind of lacking, are they still able to apply and qualify?
If they don't have to take more courses at their school.
Okay. So, maybe if they have to take more courses, that would prohibit them from enrolling into that program?
Right, right. And this summer at C-Tech, we're having Jump Start Summers, that we'll have six classes going on. You're welcome to come see it. We're open in the month of June.
I sure will. I got time this summer. I'll be over there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And just for clarity, the credit recovery could prohibit a student from participating in the internship, not necessarily participating in C-Tech.
Okay, thank you, School Board Member Stewart. Next, we have School Board Member Nathan Rust.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I support this item, especially because it's an investment in opportunities for kids outside of traditional college tracks, which, if you know me, I'm always a big fan of. I think we need to continue to grow and expand in C-Tech. I also want to point out that C-Tech is three miles closer to Woodlawn than Baton Rouge High. If academically focused kids can get to Baton Rouge High, career-focused kids can get to C-Tech. It's not a perfect world, still a long bus trip, but they can make it there. I don't know the mileage from Northeast to C-Tech, but I think it's comparable. And Northeast is a challenge in and of itself in that part of the parish. I think we all understand that. And I know that our superintendent has voiced trying to make more opportunities across the parish, and we deal with those disparities. So, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Great points, School Board Member Rust. Seeing no other names inside of the queue, at this time, Madam Secretary, please call for the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving right along, we will go to Item G11, Professional Service Contracts, None Public: Consideration of a Request for the Approval of a Professional Services Contracts Between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Following: Catapult Learning in the Amount of $30,000 for the 2023 Catholic Schools Teacher Summer Institute; and B. Inspire Ed Consulting LLC in the Amount of $64,000 for the 2023 Diocese of Baton Rouge Summer Leadership Summit. Can I get a motion? Moved by School Board Member Mark Baloo, seconded by School Board Member Shashoni Stewart. At this time now, I will turn to the queue. School Board Member Cliff Lewis.
I understand that we provide transportation for the dioceses, the Catholic schools. I just need somebody to explain to me just a little bit more how we're gonna spend $94,000 training teachers that don't teach our kids. And I understand that we're in partnership with them, we provide transportation and all that. I just need a little bit more clarity on spending $94,000.
Go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
Board Member Lewis, let me look for Dr. Bethley. Or I don't see her here. Okay, Ms. Lopez, could you come on? Thank you.
And what will we provide? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, I am not, hi, I am not Dr. Bethley, but I'm gonna take a swing at it. So, as the LEA of the parish, many of the federal funds flow through us, and so it's not necessarily that we're paying for it. We are the funding source. So, they are doing this, and we are spending the money on what they want.
So, we're just a conduit?
We're a conduit for a lot of different money for a lot of different schools because we are the LEA of the parish.
Thank you.
Thank you, School Board Member Lewis. Next, we have School Board Member Michael Goday.
Yes, and I just wanted to make sure everyone understood our related matter. You mentioned bus transportation, and the bus transportation for the non-public schools is a matter of state law that we are required to do that. That's not an option that we have a choice of doing. So, it's an unfunded mandate by the state legislature. So, it's an unfunded mandate by the state legislature that we provide that transportation for non-public school students.
I'm aware of that. Did you remember, you recall the little gentleman that was on the stage with me doing swearing in? He made that perfectly clear to me that he rode an EBR school bus every day to his private school.
That's good for you, Mr. Goday. All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, seeing no other names inside of the queue, we will turn to our public for any comments. Seeing no queue cards at this time, we will come back to our board. Seeing no names inside of the queue, Madam Secretary, please call for the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving right along, now we will turn to item H under New Business. Seeing as we pulled item one earlier, we will turn to item H two, Student Expulsion. Discussion slash consideration of a request to appeal a student expulsion brought to us today by our General Counsel, Attorney Gwen Shamelin. Could you give some context on this, Attorney Shamlin?
Yes, just briefly, the board's already been, received some communication. Students have the right, students and their parents have the right to appeal decisions of the hearings officer to the board for review, and so this comes to the board as, as a request for review. The board will vote, not vote tonight, but the board will determine tonight whether it will hear this as a full hearing at the next regular meeting of the board in June, which is one month from tonight. It requires a motion and a second, so the chair will ask the board for a motion and a second if it's their desire to, to review this matter in thirty days.
So, hearing that, can we call for that now? Okay, can I get a motion? Moved by School Board Membership, I'm sorry, School Board Member Katie Kinnerson, seconded by School Board Member Patrick Martin. This time now, I'll turn to the queue.
There's no, there's no comment? There's no comment, no public comment, a board comment, because the nature of this is, is student-related private information, so we will simply move on.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This time, we'll go ahead and we'll move forward. We can turn to item H three, Litigation. Consideration of a request to approve the execution of an agreement authorizing the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board's participation in the Johnson and Johnson Louisiana opioid settlement. Before we take a vote on this matter, School Board, I'm sorry, General Counsel, can you give us some insight on this?
Yes, sir, I want to first let the board know, I know that the board's priority is to have all matters go through the Committee of the Hold. This matter comes to you guys as its first time to the regular meeting, and the reason for that is it's time-intensive. There's a national opioid settlement, the funds to be received by states and political subdivisions, and so all political subdivisions in the state must opt in and agree to participate in the settlement for the state to enjoy the funds, which will address opioid remediation, right? And so, you have got, this board has the honor of being the last political subdivision to opt into that agreement to allow Louisiana to fully receive the funds and then employ them into their political subdivisions for use. It's my understanding after discussions with the city, parish attorney, and, and special counsel for the claimants, that roughly 28 million has been distributed to Louisiana for use. Those will be managed through the city parish office for political subdivisions in the parish, and so the school board will receive some portion of that based upon determinations and factors that'll be figured later. I could not get an exact dollar amount for us, but in essence, you're authorizing myself, superintendent, and the board president to sign documents to authorize us to participate in that, so that will, it will be a benefit to the system. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Seeing as we are the last subdivision, the political subdivision to vote on this matter, if we don't vote on this tonight, we'll be holding this process up for the entire state?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Okay.
And this matter was brought to me, too late for me to get on the cow, and so I'm bringing it to you guys because I've been asked to get a resolution before the end of this month to bring back to council.
Yes, sir. Thank you. At this time now, can I get a motion? Moved by School Board Member Michael Goday, seconded by School Board Member Cliff Lewis. At this time now, we'll go to our board. School Board Member Patrick Martin.
Yeah, Mr. Shamlin, just, just for my curiosity, I, I support this, we're gonna get whatever we wind up getting through the local political process, I assume, but will we know when we, once you and the superintendent actually sign the, the document that we authorize you to sign tonight, will we know at that time how much we're gonna get, or it's, it's a whole process to come later?
It's a process to come later, and what we can do, Mr. Martin, if, if it's the pleasure of the board, is at some point when we receive information, we can make a report to the board of what that process is and what we might be receiving, but we can't provide that tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, School Board Member Martin. Next, we have School Board Member Cliff Lewis.
Any idea where these funds, what these funds will be used for?
Well, just looking at the documents that I reviewed, opioid remediation, so you know, the opioid epidemic has, has become a problem across the country, and so my understanding is that we, we'll be looking at needs within the community, working with the mayor's office and other entities to determine how we use those monies. The school board, of course, is a logical, one entity that's a logical place to employ that, so we'll be able to bring more information to you later.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Maybe we could put them in a savings account or something.
Yes, sir.
That's good, Coach. I think what he's asking is, is once we receive those dollars, and correct me if I'm wrong, Coach, are those, are those dollars gonna be restricted or unrestricted funding?
Well, they are, they are, from what I can tell, there are mandates on how it can be used. Opioid remediation's the main piece, there may be some other, other areas as well, education, awareness, a campaign, so there may be some other requirements, but those guidelines will be provided later.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council. At this time now, no problem, Coach. At this time now, we will turn to our public for any public comments. Seeing no queue cards on this matter, we will come back to our board for any comments. Seeing none at this time, Madam Secretary, please call for the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving right along, next we have item I one for presentations, and that is for BR Bits, LSU, East Baton Rouge Parish School System, and the U, the US DOE, and the National Science Foundation Grant Presentation Update. Do we have a presentation? At this time?
President Atlantis, I, I'd like to, for this particular item, for us to move this, we may not have the time to remove it off the agenda item, but we'd like to give a presentation at a further meeting concerning this.
Can we get a motion to move this item to the Committee of the Hold?
Well, it's, the item's a presentation, so it's placed by the chair. There's no, no, really no need to move it. We can just reschedule it.
Okay, no problem at all. Thank you. Even better. Okay, moving right along. We are now going to item J one under Organizational Items, Announcement of Meetings. School Board Member Michael Goday.
Thank you, President Atlantis. A public hearing board workshop budget to be held on June first, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Boardroom. Committee of the Hold meeting to be held on June one, 2023, immediately following the public hearing board workshop in the Central Office Boardroom. Regular board meeting to be held on June fifteenth, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Boardroom. And that concludes the announcement of meetings, and I move we adjourn.
Wait, 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 before we adjourn, School Board Member Goday.
I'm trying to get you before-
I know, I'm trying to hear him get in the queue, so go ahead, Vice President.
Now, y'all know, y'all wrong for this. He gonna wait until on his day for us to end at 5:59. We're gonna have to keep all of this going for next month, too.
Keep talking, Vice President.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, this now brings us to the hour at hand. 5:59, and we get to get out of this meeting, but before we do, I will say thank you, Madam Vice President, for all that you do at the Committee of the Hold, to help us to get through these meetings when we get to the regular. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll see you next time.